Roll call of attendance.
Done.
Thank you. Have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Judy. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Julie, seconded by Mike. Any discussion?
I'd like to comment that we are accepting donations from our community of $4,600. We will use these funds to further the mission of the school district, but again, within the wishes of the donor. And we're very grateful for every dollar that we're given, and we thank you.
I'd also comment on the consent agenda. One of the things on the consent agenda that the board has done is we have all watched the We Play video for the Minnesota Sports League, High School Sports League, always get all those letters mixed up. And this movement, the video was called Why We Play, and there's a series of videos. One, this one just developed for the board, all boards across the state, and there's one for parents and coaches as well. Really helps districts and schools and athletic directors and coaches focus in on the reason we have high school sports and activities. And we just want to reiterate, the reason we have these programs is for our students. And we know very few of these students will play competitive sports, be professional actors, and these kinds of things. But it's not about that continuation of those things, it's about the enjoyment of the activity for the students and connecting those students to caring adults in our community. And we really appreciate the High School League for their work in helping us keep that focus in our districts with our students.
Any other comments? Kevin?
Along the same lines, in addition to watching the Why We Play video, which I thought was strong, that was good, we also, the board had an opportunity to review the Athletic Activities Handbook. And I thought that was quite interesting to read as well. So it was a good review.
And that handbook is available publicly, and if people can't find it, they can contact Erin, our Athletic Director, and he can help them find it if they're interested in reading that. All right. Any other comments on the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Presentations and recognitions. Barb is approaching the podium.
I know. Hey. So I am excited to be able to recognize Community Education. Montomeda's Community Education is known for its welcoming staff, dedicated space, strong marketing, and a variety of programs for our youngest learners to the seniors in our community. Community Education served over 10,000 residents last school year in a variety of classes, activities, and special events. And tonight, we'd like to recognize Community Education Team for receiving the Bronze Northern Lights Award for publications from the Minnesota Association of Government Communicators. Three, I got it, right? There it is. So they submitted three of the 2017-18 brochures for review, and the judges shared specific compliments regarding the layout and the photos. And so here to accept the award are Janice Swanson, our Marketing Coordinator, and Kathy Wyland, Community Education Director.
Do you have any words you'd like to say? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm doing your picture with you up here.
Yay!
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
So you stay in the middle.
Oh, you might just need to stay in place.
Okay.
You gotta hold that in there.
No.
Kathy, will you move this way, and Michael, you guys all shift this way so that we can stay in the middle there?
Sure.
And like, face space for them to be in the middle?
Otherwise, Alex knows I hide behind people, see?
We don't hide behind them.
We're hoping there's less.
We are.
Wait, there's more.
She's gonna tweet it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know.
Go ahead, Kevin.
I just wanted to add a brief comment to the Community Ed program and the advertising thereof, that I have been so impressed over the last few years about just how much engagement you have in the community. And one of Kathy's, I don't know if it's just Kathy or both of you, but one of the unofficial things that we have is how many pictures that we can get on the Spotted Around Town back page. And I told Kathy that I'm into this and I'll accept the challenge, and I have to say that I'm an epic fail. Kathy beats me every week, but it's pretty impressive, all the things that Community Ed is doing. So thank you for the service, and the lunches are great, too.
I also wanted to thank Kathy for her commitment to making the campus beautiful and in helping plant over 300 trees on the campus over the last three years, and for helping with the front gardens. So, awesome.
Next is a report from our student representative, which we don't have a student representative. We give them the summer off, so they're off being non-students in the summer. Approval of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes, May 23rd from the regular meeting and June 13th from the study session.
So moved.
Second. Seconded by Julie. Any discussion of the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next, we have discussion information items, starting with the calendar of events. Any events board members would like to call out for July and August? Go ahead, Kevin. Sorry, I was looking.
I gave you a couple hands up.
I was like, oh, look at all these things.
So, a couple things. I'll start with the in-district thing first. Back-to-school bash, August 21st and 22nd. I would encourage my fellow board members or anyone else, if you haven't been to one of these, it's time really well spent, and it allows one to actually take the show on the road and go out to a couple different communities in Montomeda, and work with some of our families, students and families. And it's a really neat program. I think it's been going for maybe five years, if that is, and Deb Lawler and, oh, the name, thank you, have really been, and others have been really instrumental. And I remember serving pizza with Mike Newbeck, and that was really a lot of fun. So I know we do have something on the 22nd school board meeting. Oh darn, that gets in the way of one of those. But anyway, maybe the 21st, if you're not doing anything, it really is a nice event. It's a good way to start the school year, so I do plan on being there. The other one is out of district. We, at 916, there is, 916 is putting on, on July 25th, an Equity Workshop. And I asked Connie Hayes, would it be okay if I invited my fellow board members and superintendent, and again, I guess anybody else, to come to this. It's at Hamlin, and it's an all-day, or six-hour kind of commitment. And if there's any interest, I could facilitate that connecting, but it looks to be really good. And so when I give my 916 report, I'll tell you why, so.
Other things on the calendar events people like to call out?
For the general public, our next board meeting on Thursday, July 11th, is the one meeting in a year that's earlier in the day. It's at four o'clock in the afternoon. We will have very little business. We will pay our bills and keep the district moving. And then we will have our annual retreat over at Century College. We sort of shifted the way we do this. We used to do the retreat all day long and come and do a quick board meeting. With work schedules and other commitments, we have found to split our retreat in half and do part of it in January, and part in July is more efficient and more productive for us. And so we will start with that board meeting at four o'clock. As I said, as of right now, we know very little business on that agenda, except to pay our bills and keep us running. And then we'll adjourn and go into our retreat over at Century College, which is also a public meeting if people would like to attend. Okay? All right. Next, we have the Superintendent's Evaluation Summary. So with the study session, we closed the meeting agreeing to statute to have a discussion of Ms. Dufferin's performance over this first year here in our district. And we are in the process of writing up her evaluation to go into a personnel file, but I wanted to summarize the closed meeting for the public. The board overall is very appreciative of Barb's work in our district done during this first year. They expressed how fortunate we are that we have hired such a competent and caring superintendent. Her collaborative work styles had a significant positive impact on the district. Her collaborative perspective is based on clear and transparent communication rooted in listening and considering the community context. The board is pleased with her ongoing and timely communication. She has been found over this past year to engage the right people in the community at the right time on the right issues, which has been very beneficial. She has worked to meet and establish relationships with different stakeholders, which has allowed her to help them support and engage in the district work in a very positive fashion. The board is very appreciative of her thoughtful work. She has met all her goals for the year and has been supportive of the board goals as well. Her work with us as a board has really helped us become more unified and move more towards being a highly functional board, and we appreciate that work as well. We're looking forward to year two and the work in strategic planning, and the continued work with budget transparency and communication. So we thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. That's very nice. I appreciate it. And I appreciate all of your support this first year, too, in helping me with my transitions. Thank you.
You will get a written copy when I finish.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Action items. We have some policies on our, well, one policy, Policy 902. Kathy?
And you'll notice that we are asking for approval on this policy. We've had, we had the previous reading, we're going to talk about it again tonight. Typically, we do do three readings of a policy. In this case, because, well, and Kathy, I think you'll talk about it a little bit, because we're, we want to start off July with this policy consistent all the way through the year, that's why we're asking for the two readings, which is a little different, so.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Dufferin, I'm Kathy Wyland, Director of Community Education, and I'm here seeking school board approval for changes in Policy 902, Use of School Facilities. Most of the policy changes are minor adjustments, ensuring our practices and policy match, phone number updates, typos corrected, making sure our references to district facilities is consistent, and increase in the hold harmless insurance amounts, and we've moved all fees to Appendix D. To keep pace with inflation, fees are typically increased every two or three years. The last update for Class Four and Five was in 2016. And this is of small category. It includes our for-profit and private group events. The last update for Class Three was 2014, and this group includes athletic associations, scouts, cities, political groups, government agencies, all serving primarily district residents. And these fees were not adjusted in 2016, given that the levy had passed and these groups help support that effort. The proposed fees for Class Three will increase a dollar per space, while the fees for Class Four and Five will increase by $5 and $10 respectively. The fee increases partial cost recovery and partial additional revenue for the general fund. To give you an idea, for the last completed fiscal year in 1718, Community Ed collected $4,000 in permit fee revenue, and our facilities budget ended the year with a $117,000 deficit. Now, deficit sounds bad, but it's balanced out by other revenue generating accounts in Community Ed, so our whole budget on the whole ends in a positive note. But of that money, $60,000 is used for staffing to coordinate and support the facility use process. So that's Pam Klinkhammer, our Facilities Coordinator, and also Jerry Gluck, who handles all the reservation processes. So we collected $97,000 last year in, or that year in fees. $68,000 of that supported the general fund, so that just goes right down the hall and helps support operations in the general fund. And some additional monies were spent on weekend custodial services, trash pickup, and catering. So that's kind of a snapshot of the budget piece of that. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
This all looks really great. My question is, I mean, when I look at the rates, it seems like this is really a great value for citizen groups to use our facilities, and we certainly do want people to come in and be here in this space. My question is, are we, I don't know if you've taken a look at how we stack up to this kind of thing and our fellow districts around this?
Yeah, I have not compared us with other districts, but I know that historically, facility use policies are pretty unique to each school district, and usually increases and changes are based on previous years. So unless we wanted to do a hold overhaul, which I didn't really want to do at this time, so I did not do that comparison.
I'm not suggesting that at all, but I just was curious if we're in the ballpark of...
I think we're in the ballpark. We, especially this building is used quite a bit, and, well, our fields are used all the time, so. In fact, they're happy it's not raining right now, so that's a good thing.
And if the other things to remember, too, is we have Washington County Library closing July 20th, and they have meeting room space. And so we're going to see an increased request, I think, for our space, as that space will not be available for a full year before they reopen again, so.
We've already had some groups come here, and like our TEDx group, but that's kind of our group that was going to the library, so now they're going to be here. I mean, we've been involved in that. And the library will actually be here. We'll have a kiosk outside, out at the front entry, and you can check out books and get books on hold there and return books, so. And we are not charging them. That's a community service, we're providing while they're closed.
Any other comments? Have a motion to approve the, the policy is amended, or is proposed, sorry? Thank you, Mike. Second. Seconded by Judy. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next, approval of long-term facilities maintenance 10-year plan. Julie?
Good evening, School Board, Superintendent Dufferin. My name is Julie Osterbauer. I'm Supervisor of Buildings and Grounds and Coordinator of Health and Safety, and I am here tonight asking for approval of the long-term facility maintenance 10-year plan. And are there any questions?
Julie, I'd just make one observation.
Sure.
You may notice on the screen, under indoor air quality, for Fiscal 20 and also for Fiscal 21, you see $300,000 budgeted for Fiscal 20 and $700,000 budgeted for Fiscal 21, and what that may relate to. There have been discussions at the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting regarding an indoor air quality project at OH Anderson in the form of dehumification, air conditioning. There has been no decision made on that project, and we want to make sure that it's clear that although you see that on the screen, no decision has been made on the project. The reason you see it on the screen, we are required to submit the LTFM 10-year plan to MDE every year by the end of July. And so it is much, much easier to have this budgeted in the plan that's submitted to MDE and to take it off, should the decision be made not to do the project, than to not have it included and then try to add it after the fact. So that's why you see it on the screen and in the budget that we're recommending for submission to MDE. No decision has been made on that project that's been discussed.
I'd like to emphasize, too, what you just said about the Facilities Committee having a lot of time with this plan, and so we divide our work amongst the board members, and there are a couple people, not me, who dive deeply into this work, and they've shared their approval and happiness with what you've all been doing, so thank you for that. And that's why sometimes there's not a lot of discussion at the actual board meeting, because that discussion has happened prior to the board meeting.
Any other questions, or?
Do you have any questions? No, I don't have any questions.
I'm glad you don't have any questions, Julie, that means you don't. All right, so we need to approve this to submit to MDE.
So moved.
Thank you, Kevin.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Any discussion? I want to thank those of you on the Facilities Committee. It's a lot to look at the 10-year plan every year, and I know how it shifts every single year, so thank you for your time doing that.
Do you have just one more comment? Yeah. I just want to compliment you on all your hard work on the EFS project and everything else that you're working on right now, and tell you how great the buildings and grounds look, and especially for Dan for getting that grass to grow on the island at the high school again. It looks so nice.
Dan, did Dan do that?
I don't, oh, really?
No. Dan did not do that.
Oh, really? He didn't? Okay.
No. It does, it looks fabulous.
It looks really nice. Whoever's making it grow, it looks really nice. Thank you.
We're doing our best. This rain really helped today. Thank you.
All right, well, I won't tell Dan. He'll keep it alive. He'll keep it alive.
Yeah, it looks really good.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Julie. All right, another one. Metro 916 Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Budget. Bill Manassi.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present and recommend approval on the LTFM budget for 916. You're going to see a very similar spreadsheet on the board behind you here in the boardroom, and just a quick agenda item. So in order for intermediate 916, similar to prior years, to access LTFM, which stands for Long-Term Facilities Maintenance Revenue, each member district must authorize support for their proportionate share of the cost. And so that's what you see here. Each member district is required to take action on the 916 LTFM 10-year budget. And you can see that for the year under Action, the LTFM budget in total for 916 is $144,700. The bulk of it, $116,400 in Health and Safety, and the remaining $28,000 in Deferred Maintenance. And so as we know, 916 has some relatively new buildings, and that's why you'll see a lower budget in Deferred Maintenance for 916 than you will for our district. And you can see that as we go on down the line, that LTFM budget continues to increase for 916. So in total, just in summary, $144,700 is the LTFM budget for 916 for the year under Action. Our portion of that is $5,186. So all things considered, a relatively small portion of our budget, but we are still required to seek approval from the board on it.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Kevin, for the resolution?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any discussion?
So Bill, to be clear, this money that we're approving is what we allocate already in the dues that we pay to them and the fees that we pay. This isn't more money we're allocating to 916.
It is part of our LTFM budget that we send over there. Yep.
Okay. So it's not new monies we're allocating?
It is.
Yes, that's the key. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. As long as you're there. Approval of the 2019-2020 preliminary budget.
Yeah. I know. Thought the mic's right there.
Well, thank you. Information on the screen, and also at your place relates to the preliminary budget for Fiscal 2019-20. So I'm probably going to toggle back and forth in terms between 1920 and Fiscal 20. Those are synonyms for this budget here, but what we're talking about is the preliminary budget for next school year, so July 1st, 2019, through June 30, 2020. And this information is not new. This is really information that we've been looking at since January. And really, the purpose here is to provide the information that we've been looking at all along in a clean, clear format, as a single point of reference as it relates to the preliminary budget for next year. Hopefully, you start to see some similarities in the budget document here as we get into Years Two and Three. This is very similar to the budget that you received, the revised budget for the current year, and also the preliminary budget for last year as well. So similar format, and I will just review some highlights as we go along here. So, starting first with the board, District and Building Administration. Obviously, we all know who we are. I would like to highlight that under the Building Administration, we do have two new principals for next year, Scott and Suzie, and we welcome them, at least on the finance side, with adding them to the budget document. That's how we welcome people on the finance side of things, so. And then we have our vision, our current vision, mission, and belief statements, and I do want to highlight on the bottom. Our school community has been working through a new mission and objectives. We are excited to share the new mission as part of the document once approved by the school board. And so you'll see on the next page why it's so important to, although this is a budget document, to include our belief statements, our mission, and our vision, and we are excited to fold in our new mission and vision once approved by the board later on in Fiscal 20. Under the executive summary, that's why you see our mission and vision, is because all of our enrollment and budgetary decisions that we would recommend to you seek to continue to support our mission. And then additionally, on top of that, all enrollment and budgetary decisions are vetted through the lens of keeping expenditures and taxpayer burden to a minimum while continuing our tradition of excellence. That's a non-negotiable. Everything that you're going to see here from a finance standpoint is vetted through that lens of, does it fit our mission? And that's how, although we're in the finance arena, we can support the district's overall mission and vision. We have discussed the 2019 legislative session, but overall, we feel that it was a reasonable settlement for Minnesota schools, especially compared to previous bienniums. So you can see on the board here, the 2019 E-12 Education Bill Final Settlement, as it relates to Gen Ed Formula Aid, was an increase of 2% for each year of the biennium. And so you can see the formula allowance, the general education formula allowance for the 2019-20 year will be $6,438 per adjusted pupil unit and $6,567 per adjusted pupil unit for Fiscal 21. So almost at the rate of inflation, which was 2.4%. And as we discussed at the last study session, the reason that this was so helpful was both the first paragraph regarding the formula aid and the second paragraph regarding the impact to special education aid in this biennium. So the legislature really looked at the cross-subsidy, which cross-subsidy defined is just the general edge portion, the general education portion that goes to fund special education costs, right? And for our district, we know that's about $3.9 million. That's a big number, and the legislature this year really made an emphasis to look at that cross-subsidy. And they did that in the form of cross-subsidy reduction aid in order to hold the per-pupil cost, the cross-subsidy constant at the current year level of $820 per student. And additionally, as we discussed at the last legislative session, they discussed the special ed cap as it relates to the aid formula. So they increased the cap for Fiscal 20, and then in Fiscal 21, eliminated the cap. So as I said earlier, all in all, relatively speaking, a good settlement for school districts in this biennium. And then the budget overview, so really, the important part of this is you are going to see three years in the columns within the coming pages. So you're going to see our actual audited results as of the 1718 year, so as of June 30, 2018. You're going to see our anticipated position as of June 30, 2019, so coming up here, the end of the fiscal year this weekend, and then where we expect to be June 30 of 2020. So we are recommending approval of the budget for 1920, which is, in most cases, going to be the third column on the right-hand side. So you're going to see three columns, two for comparison purposes, the column under Action would be the 1920 column. And then just quickly on our budget process. And so as we all know, our budget process is a continuous four-step process, and each step requires board approval and is open to public inspection and comment. So our budget process really starts with the property tax levy, and it did, we did our property tax levy in the form of a truth and taxation presentation last December, where we certified the audit for, or the audit, the levy for the Fiscal 20 year that we're entering into. The preliminary budget is the second stage, which we're in now, obviously, the revised budget, which we generally do in December or January, about halfway through the fiscal year, and then finally, the annual financial report and fiscal audit. So when MMKR comes in and audits our books, and you generally would receive that in November following the end of the fiscal year. So the 1920 budget, you will receive your fiscal audit in November of 2020, which certainly seems like a long ways away sitting here tonight. Okay, so first, moving to the preliminary budget for all funds combined, and so this is why I mentioned those three columns. So our 1718 actual, our anticipated position for the current year, and then our budget for next year. So you can see that in total, obviously, the general fund is the biggest fund, about 75% of our total. we certified the audit for, or the audit, the levy for the fiscal 20 year that we're entering into. The preliminary budget is the second stage, which we're in now, obviously. The revised budget, which we generally do in December or January, about halfway through the fiscal year. And then finally, the annual financial report and fiscal audit. So when MMKR comes in and audits our books, and you generally would receive that in November following the end of the fiscal year. So the 1920 budget, you will receive your fiscal audit in November of 2020, which certainly seems like a long ways away sitting here tonight. Okay, so first, moving to the preliminary budget for all funds combined. And so this is why I mentioned those three columns. So our 1718 actual, our anticipated position for the current year, and then our budget for next year. So you can see that in total, obviously, the general fund is the biggest fund, about 75% of our total. Total preliminary budget revenues are $55.8 million, and total preliminary budget expenditures are $55.76 million. The largest increase on the revenue side is the increase in levy revenue related to the levy increase from last November, and then also the legislative settlement that we just discussed. So those are really the biggest increases in revenue. And then as we look on the expenditure side, the biggest increases are going to be similar this year as they were last year, things like contractual obligations, employee benefits, other purchase services, things like our transportation contract, for example. Those are going to be your biggest movers on the expenditure side. So this is really just a summary page. I won't dive into too much detail on each of the individual funds because I do explain what those funds are and the budget breakout later on in the presentation. So just a summary page. The good news is, is that we are balanced in terms of our all funds combined. A very busy page here, our fund balance report. So you can see that the first half, and it is shaded in sort of a light yellow form, is our current year projection. And so obviously, the big number that, that we care about as it relates to our fund balance percentage is this general fund balance. So as we know, we have a projected deficit in the general fund this year, and our fund balance percentage is estimated to go down to just over 2%. And the good news is, with this 1920 budget, our fund balance is projected to be stable, right? This is just a rounding thing, but we actually have just a slight surplus of about $6,000 in the general unassigned fund for next year from our preliminary budget. And that number will look familiar from, from previous meetings. One thing that I do want to point out is the difference between our general fund, unassigned fund balance, a slight surplus of 6,000, and our total general fund, a surplus of 96,000. And so you're going to see both of these numbers, and it can be kind of confusing while we're talking about a surplus of 6,000 and a surplus of 96,000. So there are other components in the general fund, and there are these restricted categories, especially things like the capital projects levy, operating capital, and then long-term facilities maintenance that Julie Osterbauer just talked about as well. So that's really the difference between those is the restricted category. On down the line, you see the food service fund, community service fund, nothing in building construction, our voter-approved debt service, our internal service fund, which is our health insurance fund, our OPEB trust fund, and then our OPEB debt service fund. And so you can see where the surplus or deficit is projected to be for fiscal 20 in each of those funds, and I will go over those in more detail in the coming pages. First, a word on our enrollment history and our projections. So as we all know, enrollment projections are an integral part of adopting a sustainable and accurate general fund budget. As we, as we also know, we are somewhat unique in our enrollment, whereby we generally enroll anywhere from 190 to 195 kindergarten students, and we are graduating 280 to 300 students as seniors 13 years later, right? So monitoring resident grade progression ratios and balancing with open enrollment in order to maintain this enrollment model is, as we know, an important part of the budgeting process. So you can see down below here, our actual enrollment for 2014-15 through 2017-18, our estimate for 1819, and our projection for 1920 is shown below. The 1819, just a word about the 1819 estimate of 3,250, we have seen some attrition as we've discussed. We built our current year revised budget on 3,270, and so we are below that right now, and we will, we will be able to see the impact of that after we close our books here and have our audit for the, the current year audit. And so next year, right now, we're projecting 3,280, and that's K-12 total students, not including full-time PSL, shared time, or our passages students. That's K-12 students is what we're, what we're including in that calculation. Okay, so our general fund is far and away the largest fund, so it makes sense to look at the details of the general fund first. And so as we all know, it's used, the general fund is used to account for all revenue and expenditures for educational activities, district and instructional student support programs, administration, operations, and maintenance, transportation, capital, and other district expenditures not counted for elsewhere. That's the catch-all of the general fund. And as we mentioned before, it does include our long-term facilities maintenance, what used to be referred to with operating capital as Fund Five, and also our capital projects levy program. And the reason why that's important to include in this budget, these categorical expenditures can fluctuate considerably from year to year and can impact the overall view of the district's funding picture. And so you can see in the, in the general fund, that's where that 96,000 that you've seen in the previous all funds combined summary page, obviously, the bulk of our revenue comes in the form of state aid, and you could see our local property taxes. So the increase of about $1 million year over year related to the increase in levy revenue from the November 2018 referendum. And the other changes are really not significant right now, such that the total increase year over year is about 1.97 million. And so the, the reason for the increase, again, the levy revenue and then the legislative settlement for both the Gen Ed aid and special education investment as well. Under the expenditure side, obviously, the bulk of the increase has to do with salary and wages and employee benefits. So as a percent of the total, that's our largest percentage. Purchase service, that's, the increase there is largely due to our transportation contract, and then the other changes as well. So we are, are happy right now that our preliminary budget that we're bringing for recommendation is balanced, actually a slight surplus, just under $100,000. Our fund balance policy. So the board has fund balance policy 714 related to our, our fund balance. And as we've discussed, we will strive to maintain a minimum unassigned general fund balance of 8%. As we know, we are below that. We're projected to be 2.1% at the end of this fiscal year. So as we, as we know, and we've discussed previously, we did target 1%, about 1% of expenditures in order to staff based on enrollment and balance the general fund budget for 1920. And as a result, we are recommending a balanced budget tonight. And in accordance with our fund balance policy, budget items such as supplies and materials and membership dues have not been increased. This is now the second year in a row for 2019-20. So you can see our fund balance percentage, this is a familiar chart that we've all seen before, a decrease over the last handful of years. It took us, obviously, a handful of years to get to the point where we are, and it's going to take us a handful of years to get back to that 8%. But it is important, and we're happy to present a balanced budget, and hopefully can continue to climb towards that 8% in the coming years. Looking now at expenditures by program instead of expenditures by object, and so you can see where our expenditure increase or decrease is in each program. Obviously, the bulk of the administration increase is adding back the Wildwood principle for next year. We did not have a principal at Wildwood for 1819. We are adding that back for 1920. That's the bulk, not all, obviously, of the increase, but a portion of that increase is related to adding back that principle. One thing I'd like to mention, just in terms of the illustration down here in the pie chart, if you add up regular instruction, vocational instruction, and special education instruction, that's about 70% of our total expenditures. And that's high comparatively. So as a board, I would imagine you want to see expenditures in the classroom. And that's really what you see here when you look at regular instruction and special education instruction. About 70% of our expenditures in the general fund focused back into the classroom, just in those two programs alone. And that's good to see. The quick slide on personnel, because we have already lifted this in, in some length, no real significant changes here. So you can see we do have five union groups and then an unaffiliated group as well, the teachers, clerical, paraprofessionals, custodians, custodians of maintenance, the principals group, and then the unaffiliated group. So you can see where our FTE projections are, and they are projections right now for 1920, under those different union groups, and then the unaffiliated group as well. Looking now at the other governmental funds. So I will go rather quick through, through these funds because we've seen some of this information before. So obviously, we all know what the food service fund is, provides meal services in our school district. We do partner with the Stillwater Schools for that surface, service for both supervision and the day-to-day work done in that fund. And we were required, in accordance with federal guidelines, to increase our meal prices slightly for 1920. It wasn't something that we, we chose to do. We were required to do that. And you can see that our lunch prices are down as follows for both lunch and breakfast in the elementary and secondary. And then you can see the revenue and expenditures. Obviously, the bulk of our revenue relates to sales, and then in our federal aid, free and reduced, and other commodity revenues is really the bulk of that revenue. On the expenditure side, obviously, the bulk in contracted services with our Stillwater contract, and then our supplies and materials, which is food and materials. So in order to run a food service fund, you need food. Just a small deficit, just being conservative, in our preliminary budget in the food service fund for next year. The community ed fund. So as Dr. Wyland just explained, community ed fund used to record all financial activities with four components, each with its own fund balance. So the community education, ECFE, which stands for early childhood family education, school readiness, and adult basic education. Excuse me. Looking at the revenue and expenditure budget, one thing I'd like to point out, so obviously, we know in the general fund, the bulk of our revenue comes from the state, and then the local taxpayers, and then some local fees, and then finally, the, the federal government. So these can vary depending on the fund. So you can see in the food service fund and also in the community education fund, the bulk of our fees, or the bulk of our revenue is fee-based. And so 1.87 of our 2.27 million budget is based, or comes from fees and charges. So a smaller amount from our local taxpayer and then a smaller amount yet from the state. And then you can see the expenditure breakout as well, a small surplus projected for fiscal 20 and then community education fund. Debt service fund. And so what the debt service fund is, it's for our district's voter-approved outstanding bonded indebtedness. And, and you can see the budget here, a small deficit of 78,600. The district is required to levy 105% of expected principal and interest payments to account for delinquent payments in this fund. And so that's really the reason for any surplus in this fund, is, is related to that 105% that we're required to levy. The OPEB debt service fund. So OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits. The district set up an OPEB trust fund back in 2009, and this is the debt service to pay for it. So just like the debt service fund, the OPEB debt service fund pays off the principal and interest payments for the OPEB bond. The internal service fund, that is the health insurance for our high deductible medical insurance plan, and you can see that we're projected to be balanced in the internal service fund as well. And then finally, the OPEB trust fund. So the OPEB debt service fund is what we're using to pay off the, the debt. The OPEB trust fund is the trust that we set up to pay those post-employment benefits. The net assets or the fund balance in the OPEB trust account, as of the end of last year, was 1.35 million, and that's updated annually at the end of each fiscal year. This is in a deficit position, but we would expect that to be in a deficit position as we use the trust fund for its intended purpose, to pay off those liabilities. And the revenue coming in at this point is just our projected interest revenue related to that trust. Finally, our all, all-fund summary. So rather than going over each, each one, I'll just give you sort of my thoughts on, on a summary. The general fund is balanced, projected to be balanced for next year. A lot of work went into doing that, and, and we are happy that, that budget that we're recommending to you tonight is balanced. We will continue to monitor our 1819, our current year, projections through the end of the year, and obviously, you will hear more about that as, as we get into the fall and finally, the audit. And then our overall revenue and expenditures, you can see are right at that 55.8 million dollar number. So that's our overall total budget, all funds for fiscal 20. Supplementary information, I could read all of this to you if you'd like, but I don't know that you want me to do that. So you can see our expenditures by object, expenditures by program. If you are looking through the budget and you're curious on what the definitions of each program area are, this, this provides that information for you. And then lastly, in terms of a summary, I'll just review our timeline again. So we started in early January, and we will start by identifying our enrollment target for next year. The school board looked at budget assumptions related to the 2019 legislative session, and then looked at options and scenarios in order to balance the budget for 1920. In April, after that was discussed, we started looking at other governmental funds, the food service fund and community education fund. And as I mentioned, the total budget revenues for next year are 55.8 million. The total budget expenditures are 55.76 million. Before I take any questions that you may have, I just do want to wrap it up and, and mention that this requires many hours, as this board knows, of review, preparation, deliberation by the school board. Also, the finance committee did some heavy lifting on this. Building and district administration, they're a big part of this process, especially this year, and they should be thanked as well. And then finally, the staff in my office did a great job reviewing this information, helping me with it, and I'd like to thank them as well. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you for that clar, that little bit of information. I made an assumption, and I'm glad that my assumption was correct, on the increase in the admin fee was to add back a building principal, which we had gone, one of our buildings had gone without, we took, not without, because obviously, we had Lynn there, but Lynn has another role, and, and we utilized her to help us this past year to, to run Wildwood. So let's see. So one of my questions is on the rate of inflation that you referenced in the presentation. What period of time are you using for that 2.4?
It's a great question. I got that percentage from Dr. Melcher at the Masbo, at the Masbo update. The, the Masbo legislative update is where I got that percentage. He did not give, or at least I did not catch what, what timeframe that was from, but that was where I got the percentage from.
Well, from the settlement or the, what we got in the budget going for, coming from the state to a budget at 2%, we are still not keeping up with the rate of inflation for whatever period Dr. Melcher referenced. Gets back to that structural imbalance that we have and most districts have. And so I think, you know, again, it's for the viewing public, it, it, there, there needs to be that knowledge that we do the best we can with the resources given from the state, but we're still, over the last 16 years, not keeping up with the rate of inflation. That's the number that you gave us, I know, when we were talking about this last year. So I just think it's important that the public know that we're just not getting what the state really needs to contribute to the school district in order to make sure that we don't have that structural imbalance. The other question I have, and maybe it's not for tonight, but maybe it's something that we could look at in the future, and maybe I can talk to Superintendent Duffron to, I'm, I'm curious, and I've been a little bit curious about the fund balance. You know, we see the 2.1 and then, you know, coming the 2.1. And how do we see ourselves climbing out of that back to our 8%? Do we have, I mean, you said a handful of years to get to 2.1 and maybe a handful of years to get to eight or more. And so what is the, are we looking at the operating levy to help do that? And again, I'm just, I'm just kind of, for maybe a work study or something, we could talk about that. But I'd be, if, if someone asked me, you know, out on the street, it just would be nice to have some kind of idea of how to maybe answer that. And if I don't know something, of course, my stock answer is to call bar. But it, it would be nice to, to have that, just kind of the idea of what we're looking at to get us back up. So that, is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. That's, that's it?
Great. Thank you.
I was, I thought I'd just clarify one thing. So at the study session, we had talked about the lunch prices. And in, so in the budget, it reflects that increase based on what we had talked about at the study session. But since that was not on camera, would you mind just... But since that was not on camera, would you mind just, just kind of doing a quick summary of that and why we have increases in the lunch prices for next year?
So we are managed, monitored by a federal guideline, the paid lunch equity calculation. And so our food service supervisors from Stillwater are required to fill out that calculation each year. And depending on your prices, as it looks in the calculation, you are required or not to increase your meal prices. And so when we filled out that spreadsheet, we are required to increase our meal prices. It doesn't have to do with the health of the food service fund, nor does it have to do with supplementing the general fund with the food service fund. It's just simply a calculation from the federal government that we're required to do. And based on the results of that is whether or not we need to increase our prices for the next year, and we do need to increase our prices.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments?
It's very clear. Thank you.
And a motion to approve the 2019-2020 preliminary budget. Thank you, Judy. Moved by Judy, seconded by Kevin. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much, Barb. That was very well done. Now on to school board committee reports. AMSD, Barb?
I don't have one because there wasn't one since last year.
Of course not. Okay. MAFE, Julie?
There was not another MAFE meeting. There was a meeting where the board got together and just had to vote on their budget. So Barb and I did not attend.
Because you're ex officios.
Yes. Right. Kevin?
I have a little add-on. Just the other day, we got a note from Kate Crampy on the citizens committee for, that did all the work on the levy. And they ran a very tight ship, a very tight ship. And they have to, according to Secretary of State guidelines, they have to dissolve at the end. And so they had some money left over. And I want to say it's $180 or maybe a little bit more. Does that sound right?
I'm sorry.
Okay. It's around that. So underestimate that, it's about $180 bucks. And so the committee voted unanimously to donate that money, dissolve and then donate that money to MAFE for the benefit of our students and teachers and the thing, so.
So we haven't met either, but I did see on their website, you've seen in their emails, the legislative summary is out and is on the website. Usually, we pick up copies of that at the summer seminar. And this year, we are not attending summer seminar, we are attending the personalized learning conference. And so you'll have to look at the electronic version because it's on the website if you want to see all the impact in policy and finance from their perspective. 916.
916. I told you, I left you hanging there earlier, but we had, last Wednesday, we had a two-hour work-study session where we talked about equity. And it was one of the best two hours spent. And part of it, I think there was something magic that happened. It's the school board, the 14 members, school board members, not everyone was there, but many, most of us were there. And it was that kind of trusted space where people felt for those, you know, that little magic time that they could share. And that really made it a very worthwhile and valid experience for me. And again, the idea was to kind of use, they wanted, 916 has done a lot of work in this area and to kind of bring the board into that conversation. And one of the things after going through this, and it may be not a good idea, but I, you know, I bring up ideas, and if they're good or bad, people can decide. So I suggested, A, this thing on this equity workshop thing, which I got the affirmative, so I'll send that out to Laura and then she can distribute it to the board to decide if you want to go. But it's free and I think it's going to be pretty good. They have a toolkit on equity inclusion work, which is great. The board members for 916 are able to go in and access this stuff. And I looked at one this morning and it was fantastic. And there's tons of this. Now, unfortunately, I'm not at liberty to share those. And I got Connie Hayes, the superintendent, they're kind of thinking. But I said, you know, this idea of could 916 help the member districts on their equity work? And she, you know, I caught me again, I caught her on a thing, she had, you know, she said, "Well, we don't at 916 want to force that down to any superintendent or admin teams for any of the member districts." I said, "Well, no, I'm not suggesting that you do that, but that you offer that as a value add." That's another reason for being a member district for 916. And Barb, it sounds like you've got some thoughts on that?
Well, I, only that I saw an email come through this afternoon from Connie Hayes reflecting what you are saying in terms of inviting boards to participate. Details, it just came through this afternoon, so I haven't gotten the details, but I'll send those to you. And so you got her thinking and she is, she is interested in supporting board work around...
Because I think that, I mean, our member districts, there's 14, and, you know, Stillwater, Montamede, I, White Bear, North St. Paul, Forest Lake, 14 of them. And it goes as far as, don't make me say them all, I won't get them. But the furthest north is St. Francis, and that would be north and west. And, you know, I think there is quite a diversity of, we're all on that journey in a different, in a different place. And 916, again, from what I've seen, is really pushing, as well they should, they've really been pushing ahead on that. And so they actually have an equity coordinator-type person. And so it's just, you know, it's just something to think about is, why does every district have to reinvent the wheel when there might be a good way to share this out? So that's my 916 report.
Kevin and Julie also attended a book group this week. Do one of you want to talk about the little book group or not?
I didn't go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was intending to go, but I didn't put it in my calendar.
Well, I wasn't able to go, and so I'm, pardon for information.
We went to like an equity lunch, like a little seminar. And Barb was there. It's going to happen again, 11:30 to 12:30 again. It was just a, just an overview, an introduction for people to really get to know each other better and to think...
Kind of grounding about what we can...
Thinking about how you identify yourself.
And Courtney Cormick, who was leading that group, did send out, for those people who are interested, she sent out some information and also, and also a reading for the next one. So if you were interested and I didn't realize it, I can forward that on to you.
I had every intention of going, but I looked at it and then I didn't put it in my calendar. It got me.
Did she send out white fragility?
It was, okay, because that's, she handed that out to us after. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other school board subcommittee reports or events people like to report on? Kevin?
Glad I have Kathy here to help me when I stumble. But kind of along the vein of what we've been talking about here just recently, there is a group that started last year, the Many Faces group, started between Montamede Community Ed and White Bear Schools Community Ed. And it was an idea to start some conversations around history, around the Lake White Bear, defined by the White Bear Lake. And very successful. We had three sessions here, three sessions over there. This has taken, people liked it. People were, we had great turnout and some great food made by Kathy. And so it was good. And so I guess where I'm going with this is it's going to continue for next year. And Century College has decided to participate in this as well. And the beauty of that is, you know, we have these three great educational institutions, and Century is the third. But what's really great about Century Two is they have a budget that can support bringing in. They brought in Sherman, the sous chef. And he's not inexpensive, and they brought him in as a wonderful thing. But so Century is going to add yet another component to this. And I don't know how many items we've got on this list, but it's really gotten huge. So I'd invite you all to participate and come to some of the things we're doing at school.
Okay. Superintendents' report.
Well, it will be brief, but even though we are out right now and school is not in session, that does not mean there's nothing going on because we've got community ed in full swing. I did walk into the middle school on the first day of summer band and surrounded by a lot of very enthusiastic students who were happy to be there. And I know that Summer Mac is also going, and I am curious about phonology. Phonology, I'm going to go have to check that out. Some of you are nodding knowingly as that you know what's going on there. I also mentioned that I did notice today that there are few spots left for the theater production of Aladdin. So if those students who are out there who are interested, I'm putting in a plug because I, one of my introductions to Montamede, I was going to a community ed production last year, a summer production. So I know they're fun, and it's the kind of production that I love because it's kids being kids on stage and, and those are, those are pretty fun. There's a lot of energy there, too. So I'm putting in a plug. But the work that we've really been engaged in since school's been out has been our strategic plan. And we did have our session with our planning team where each of the action team leaders came and presented to the planning team and said, so well, so to back up, the planning team was the group that set the direction. They put out the mission and the objectives and then handed it off to the action teams who then developed these details to go and said, said if this is where we're going, here's what we need to do. And about 70 community members participated in that part. And so since school's been out and since we've been together, the action teams came and presented to the planning team and said, here's what we think the district should do in order to go in that direction. Here's what we want to see. And so we've been through that. And now we have a lot of, I think we had 28 different action plans to look through. And so for the past two days, our administrative team has been digging into those action plans and looking and saying, trying to prioritize and just see what it is, where are the connections, where's the energy, what are we going to get started on right away? What's our learning work coming up? And so that's what we've been working on for the past two days. And that's what I get to share with you when we work at our retreat as a kind of our first run at really looking and digging into that strategic plan, which we'll be bringing to you again in August for approval. So it's been great and exhausting, both. So we've had a, had a good few weeks with that. And with that, that's my report.
Can I see your friend something else?
So when Barb started a year ago, this is a meeting, usually we reapprove student handbooks. And if you notice, we don't have student handbooks to read. And I asked Barb about it at our meeting earlier this week, and she was super excited about handbooks.
Sort of.
I thought you were.
Well, because there's...
She had that excitement.
Well, there's been a lot of work done on the handbooks because, so I will say that Alice and Patrick have been leading the charge and creating, getting, gathering the administrators together to say, let's try and get this going in a direction where we have a common, some part of this handbook is common, K-12. And then also, what are the things that are unique to each building? Laura also jumped in and was working with the staff across the, each of the buildings around what needs to be in there from our clerical staff perspective in terms of what are those elements that they need communicated in there as well. And so it's been a real team effort on trying to create that handbook so that is, as a K-12, expectations are similar with the uniqueness as well. And there's, as you know, as people who have reviewed that in the past, there's a lot of information. The other part we're doing is we're making it an electronic handbook so that in the past, you've been under the pressure of the timeline because it has to go to print. And we're making that electronic and making it online. So then in the future, once all this work is done, then the updates will be easier as well. And that started, I don't know, months ago, months ago, probably this winter, January, February, maybe. They're conferring back there about the handbooks, but it's been ongoing for a while, so.
But the students will still be read that in their...
Advisory.
Advisory?
Sections?
Well, I don't know about the entire handbook because...
Certain sections.
But the idea is that every, yes, every, every student needs to be, you know, be introduced to those parts of the handbook and then they need to acknowledge receipt of. So that is part of it.
Kevin?
So I would imagine, too, that as the strategic plan is starting to roll out and be implemented, such things as the mission statement, which I don't know if we're, that's quite ready yet, but that will then come into that, those student handbooks. So there'll be a unifying piece, vision, mission, other shared values. So I would imagine that after all this work is done and then when the strategic plan rolls out, there'll be yet some more revisions.
We will talk about the philosophy of how we use our strategic plan and how everyone can tie in and find their place in that when we meet.
Will there be pre-readings or pre-work for the retreat that the board should be aware of?
My idea of a retreat is that you don't do pre-reading, is that you come and just are ready for a conversation that's, I think that helps if we're all creating together as opposed to creating our own ideas before we arrive. So philosophically, I would suggest that there's going to be a little, there's going to be some activity that you need to complete, and then you'll bring it with you, but it is not a reading or a big processing. You'll see. It'll be great, it won't be too stressful. How about that?
Just wanted to make sure we're all ready.
No worries.
It won't be hard.
As long as we're not knitting.
No. I can teach you to knit during...
I don't know. You said an activity.
No spaghetti engineering?
No, nope, nothing like that. Don't worry.
All right. Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
So do.
Thank you, Kevin. Seconded by Kevin, seconded by Stacy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We adjourned.
Why don't we just stay here?